I'll call the May 13th study session of Newport Beach City Council to order. We have the rule call, please.
The record will reflect that council members Rozansky and Webb are absent and council member Webb is on vacation, so he's excused.
Okay. First item is clarification of items on the consent calendar, or council member Gardner?
Nothing.
Councilman, uh, Curry?
No items.
Councilman Hen?
Nothing.
Mayor Proton Davis?
Uh, yes, on the number 13, the construction of the restroom at Mariners Park, um, just making sure Councilman Webb's, um, okay with the plan? Okay.
He's very okay with the plan.
Okay, thank you.
Very okay.
And then on 14, um, I wanted to get a, a staff report on the eelgrass, um, so that the community, uh, knows what the city's efforts are with regards to that. I don't know if now would be the appropriate time, or better time than this evening.
Now would be fine.
Chris, can you, uh, give a brief summary of it, of what's happening with the eelgrass?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, my name is Chris Miller with Harbor Resources, and, um, just to give a brief summary of the eelgrass, um, survey, um, we're, we're mending our contract, uh, with Coastal Resources Management, so that, um, we're taking off a portion of their contract, which was to, um, develop mitigation banks. And this was a contract we've had in place for about a year and a half now. And we decided midway through this that mitigation banks, before we set up the mitigation banks, we should, um, we should know a little bit more about the harbor. And, um, and we wanted to figure out where the eelgrass was in the lower, in the, in the lower depth portions of the harbor. And the only way we can do that is with, uh, using a side scan sonar technique. And, um, NOAA Fisheries used to do this, or National Marine Fisheries used to do this work for us, but, um, um, they're unable to update those reports for us. So Coastal Resources Management has, um, decided that they would like to take over that function, and, uh, it'll help us get more understanding of our overall eelgrass in the harbor and our lower depths, um, in the middle of the channels, and then, um, we'll use that information and come back at a later time and develop, uh, mitigation banks. You're welcome.
Chris, that sounds like it would be good information for dredging purposes also.
Yes, it will be.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, and I have none. So our first discussion item is the tsunami warning system testing.
Mayor, council, uh, just want to give you a quick, uh, update, and, uh, you can put it on your calendar if you'd like to, uh, come on out and watch, but, uh, on May 22nd, down at the Balboa Pier, uh, parking lot, we're going to be testing. Four vendors are going to be showing up and, and putting up their sirens, and we're going to be running them through the, uh, um, voice activation aspect. Both of them, they will have voice activation aspect and sirens. We're going to do both. They give a map in front of you, and you can see there's, uh, the one inside concentric circle is, I think it's on your map, a green one. That's probably the mile. Uh, what we've done is, uh, the voic, the sound will probably go out a mile, a mile and a half, but, uh, for notification, we felt like to let everybody know in that area what we're doing. We tried to kind of do a four-pronged deal. We actually have mailed out, we got, uh, three bids on mailing, and, uh, approximately to get the word out, it's going to run us approximately $8,000 it's going to cost us, as cost us. Uh, just put the mailing out, uh, we're getting, I think the city has one, uh, electronic mess, message board, we're going to rent two more to give people notice of what's going on. Uh, the mailers been out, we actually then have banners that are going up, one on the pier, down in those areas, so people can now get to do it. And then probably, uh, the day before we actually do it, I have, uh, five CERT members along with two staff that are going to go out, probably in the general vicinity of, uh, oh, no, thousand feet in that area, put them on doorknobs, so people that are right there in the area, um, will know. The vendors have assured us that they'll be careful on the direction, they're not going to point them right at the homes or anything like that, and that the decimal ratings inside are not going to create, uh, any undue inconvenience, other than they said they probably wouldn't want your pets outside, uh, listening per se, but, um, um, it's not deafening, it's be the normal sirens that would be there on any other time. But, uh, we're going to, on the afternoon, after the sirens, we're going to do oral presentations with either the vendors where they can present their, um, cases on, uh, why their product is the best product, and we'll be evaluating them with a board, uh, to look at who we're going to choose to, to select. Um, the bids are all in, uh, they have, some of them have numerous options, uh, under theirs, so we're looking at all those, it's, it gets a little complicated, they, they feel they can give you everything, so we're looking at all those to see what we really want, but we're going to test the siren capability and the voice, uh, capability, see what we get out of them. We're going to have evaluators out on the field at a mile, mile and a half, and any closer, and we have a grading sheet that we're going to be scoring them to see what we hear, and we'll go from there.
Okay, uh, Councilman Hen?
Just a quick question, chief. Uh, so if this test goes well, and you find one or two or three vendors that look good, uh, what's the timing, do you think, to final selection and then?
It should be fairly, excuse me, uh, it should be fairly quick. We'll determine, uh, after we meet with all of them, um, based on the, some of the criteria, internal criteria that we're going to have, cost, there'll be some other things as far as just the, who the vendors are, what we feel the reliability is, and some of their, uh, as far as, as far as going back, talking to some of the references, um, I mean, we could come back within, give you a recommendation probably within a two, three weeks of that, to who we actually are going to pick, and come back to you for a recommendation on, uh, choosing that individual.
And then implementation would be some months following, uh?
Correct, we have to sit back down with the vendor and, and work out a timetable on, um, their implementation. Most of, a lot of the vendors, these are vendors, a lot of the, we have the wholesalers that are there, or the actual companies, they use outside vendors or outside contractors, so we'd have to look up and set a schedule up of, uh, what we need to do.
So this would definitely be after the summer season, then, before?
I, I think that'd probably be reasonable, I think we can, we can move quickly, but, uh, never, having done this before as far as sirens, but after I've talked to other agencies, they said you can actually put them up fairly quickly, um, but that would probably be not an unreal, uh, expectation right after summer.
No, thanks.
Mayor Proton Davis?
A couple of questions, I ran into, um, Harvard Patrol over the weekend at the opening of some of the yacht clubs, and they were unaware of the testing, um, are we doing outreach with other, eh, law enforcement agencies?
Correct. In fact, uh, this week, we're actually going around and contacting some of the, down there, I think there's one hotel that's in that area, some of the major restaurants down there, so they're aware of it, uh, any of the other agencies. I'll check to see if we've contacted them, if they haven't, we will, uh, just to give them a heads up, um, as we will everybody else, I think we're trying to, everybody within that, they should get a mailer actually, uh, at their, even at their place, uh, on this, because we've picked up all the addresses that are in that concentric circle, and they should be in there, but we'll contact them, just make sure.
And as I mentioned at the prior session, um, on this, um, on these sirens, that citing this kind of thing in, in the neighborhood can get kind of tricky, and certainly introducing new sounds and new visual elements can be a tough go in neighborhoods, and, and I was curious, let's say we go forward to this testing, and after an hour, you've got a flurry of phone calls, you know, a lot of confusion has broken out, who makes the judgment call to say, you know, maybe we ought not to continue this?
Well, if, I'll probably be there, so if, if it is creating a, an enormous amount of, you know, gender rates, and it, it's a good point, because we don't know what we're going to, I say it could be anywhere from no calls to 6,000 calls all of a sudden on 911, we'll wait and see. We do have a, um, all the, everything we're putting out numbers if they want to contact, uh, to ask questions about it after the fact, um, we actually, it's on the website, you can click on there, on the city website and do that, but if all of a sudden, um, it goes sideways, absolutely, I can make that decision very easily that it wouldn't, but I, I don't foresee that. Uh, I know they've done this up Marina Del Rey, probably about two years ago, three years ago when I was in Long Beach, and they didn't seem to have a whole lot of problem with it, uh, but certainly if it did, you know, we can call, pull plug on it.
Okay, any other questions, chief? Okay, thank you. Okay, any comment from the public on the tsunami warning system test? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to our next item, which is budget review, the overview and the capital improvement program. Mr. Bladau?
Actually, Dennis is going to give most of this presentation, and I will come in at the tail end.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Mayor, and members of City Council. This is the, uh, as we do each year, we, uh, pass the budget out to you in late April, early May, we begin our review of it at, at the first study session in May, and that's what we'd like to do today, is to do the overview of the budget, then it'll be followed by a CIP presentation, and then we'll re, begin the department review at our next, uh, study session. If you will, uh, we've included, uh, many of the same slides as we have in the past. What we'd like to cover today is, uh, review of the budget process and assumptions, our revenues and expenditures, where we look at reserves and fund balances, and then we're going to spend some time at, at the end of the presentation, uh, going through the funding for the council priorities, and then we'll reach our conclusion. We've included a lot of slides here at the beginning that you've all seen before, and I can go over them very quickly. The reason we left them in here is for the public's benefit, this is on our website, and of course it's going to be televised. City Charter budget provisions require us to, uh, present to you a budget at least 35 days prior to the beginning of each fiscal year. We get, we distributed the budget on April 25th, and as I mentioned, this is our first review of that document. I think what's important here is the second bullet, and that is the council must adopt a budget prior, on or before June 30th, and we're scheduled to, you're scheduled to adopt the budget at the second meeting in, in June. Just like to mention that this is a, a long process, it actually takes eight months for us to prepare the budget, review it, and then go over it with the council for adoption. We begin this process in November, culminating in June with your adoption. Items that are included in this budget are, of course, council reserve fund policies, we've met all council, uh, reserve requirements, there's all approved positions and recommended full-time changes, merit and step increases, reclasses, which I believe there's only two in this budget, and Barbara will talk about that during her presentation. We've made some ceiling adjustments, as we do each year, for things that we've considered that are uncontrollable by the departments. That could include, uh, contract amendments that have a CPI adjustment in them, course fuel costs, uh, utility costs, things that we don't think the departments can control very well, and we grant ceiling adjustments for them. All known MOU increases are included in this budget, we've got multi-year contracts with all of our associations, except the fire, uh, associate, two fire associations, so for those, we've set money aside, all other, uh, MOU increases are included in this budget. We've got many city manager approved supplemental budget items, and of course significant resources, which will demonstrate have been directed towards council priorities. This is a little hard to read, but what I'd just like to point out on this slide is, there are certain items that we include each year as part of the budget process, these are things, community requests, that historically we put on the budget checklist, and I believe two years ago, we were directed just to go ahead and include them in the budget, but we wanted you to be aware of them, and so we've listed them here on this slide. And please stop me if you have any questions in the meantime, I know I'm going pretty quickly.
And Dennis, before we leave that slide, the restaurant association request is, is not on that slide, so it isn't built into the budget, they would be one of those extra requests.
As you know, we receive, um, we give each department a ceiling, and we say, anything that's above or beyond that ceiling, uh, it's a new program, a special program, we ask them to put on a supplemental request. Again, this slide may be a little hard, uh, to read on the board, but, uh, we received over $3 million, three and a half million dollars in supplemental budget requests by the departments. We couldn't, uh, fund all those, of course, so, uh, through the review with the city manager, the second column, we chose to fund about 700,000 of those in the current year budget through savings in, in existing, um, budgets for this year. Uh, the city manager approved approximately 1.7 million dollars in, in the supplemental budget requests in the new year, fiscal year. The middle column, uh, those requests are offset by over $500,000 in, um, revenue offsets, so the net approved is about one, I can't even read it, 1.8 million. And, uh, the last column is a little over $1 million of supplemental requests that were not approved as part of this budget process.
Oh, where could you, just broad brushstrokes, as far as, um, code enforcement, what sort of things that were in their budget, do you remember?
As I recall, uh, Dave Kiff had requested, um, a, a large number as far as, as group homes, and in talking with him and fleshing that out, uh, we decided that we could, um, probably accomplish the same thing without as much money, and we also, uh, pre-funded some of that in, in this fiscal year.
Some of the supplemental items that were not approved by the city manager, um, I'll go over them quickly, account one position in my department, we requested one new position that was not approved, additional traffic commercial vehicle for the police department was not approved, the city attorney requested, uh, to convert a part-time deputy city attorney to full-time, which was not recommended or included in the budget. There's deferred maintenance in Harper Resources that was not approved, a department assistant in the human resources department was not approved, and there were some economic development studies and planning that were not approved as part of this budget process.
And Dennis, before we leave that, I do want to, uh, make sure that council understands that last one, I think it was a $200,000, uh, economic development study for the city, that, I, I know it's something that, uh, some of the council people, you know, are aware of, and I think it came out at the EDC, but based upon the numbers, I, I just did not feel like I could fund it, so I want to make sure that you understand that in case that you want to put it back on.
Uh, Dennis, can you speak to the, um, deferred maintenance item?
Yeah, Chris can speak to deferred maintenance, he is here, uh, he isn't here. As I recall, um, there-
It was not $8,000 for electrical and crosstalk?
Was that like in one of the marinas or something?
It-
About all busy.
We have one-time expenditures that included in the 2008, 2009, um, budget, um, these are one-time that you won't see again after this year, LCP, hopefully, LCP program certification, utility yard security updates, 80,000, utilities generator transfer switch, 35,000, JWA issued consultants, and code enforcement issues, 150,000 dollars in the city attorney's budget.
Again, a question, why would we not have ongoing use of consultants with John Wayne?
You know, we, we probably will, uh, I don't know if it's going to be 75,000, and it's, it's kind of a, a case-by-case situation each year, so you're right, that probably shouldn't be on there.
Items that are not included in this budget, I mentioned supplemental that weren't recommended by the city manager, of course, CIP is not recommended for funding, which Steve will talk about, uh, later in this presentation. I mentioned that the firefighter and fire management MOUs are not included in this budget, because we don't know what those will be, we have set money aside for those, so that they, we have money set aside to fund those, but they're just not included in the budget. And of course, tonight, uh, we're going to be talking to you about, uh, changes to the fee structure based upon the fees, uh, findings. None of those new fees, whatever they may be, whatever's ultimately adopted by the council, none of those are included in as part of this budget.
How do you plan on handling that? Is that just going to be extra money in next year's budget if we approve that, or what?
Yes. That, again, um, we've, we've had estimates anywhere from three and a half to 5.4 million dollars, and all, we don't know ultimately what will be approved by the council, but it's somewhere in that range, and that'll be money that will be included in the budget when you adopt the, the ordinance and the resolution.
And we certainly didn't want to build anything around the, uh, presumed approval of any of those fees, or estimate that it would be $2 million or, or whatever, we thought it, it should be separate and stand alone, so, none of, uh, our expenditures are based upon any changes in the, uh, in the fee ordinance.
Well, would, would you be considering at some time, though, like funding something like, uh, something that seems pretty basic, like upgrading electrical in the marina, that if these fees are approved, then you'd come back and recommend funding those items, or what?
If council is open to that, I mean, I, I think our budget is pretty tight this year, and in the past, especially the past couple of years, as things have come up during the fiscal year, you know, we've gotten unappropriated revenues, and we think that we're going to be tighter on unappropriated revenues this year, because we, we tried to estimate more closely, rather than as conservatively as we've done in the past. We don't think we're liberal in terms of our estimates, but we are less conservative than we have been. So, there really does need to be some slack in there, as things come up during the year, that we don't know what they are, that there is some money and some opportunities for council to fund things like that.
So you'd look at it as more being a cushion than whatever additional revenue we got?
We, we have a, a slide coming later in the presentation, um, about our reserves, and what we did this year was place 3.5 million dollars into our capital improvement reserve as part of our facilities replacement plan, but as you know, from presentations we made previously, we're going to need around six and a half million dollars to fully fund the facilities replacement, so we're counting on those fees to help make up that gap.
I, I guess another related question, if we approve the, uh, the recycling contract later on in the, in the agenda this evening, which is about a $600,000 a year savings, how does that play into the budgeting for next year?
Well, I think it, it just changes the expenditure amount by 600,000, so that isn't anything that's figured into the budget, because the budget had already gone to print as this thing is playing out, so that would be an extra $600,000 available to be, uh, dedicated to some, some uses.
Okay, thank you.
We have expenditures in prior years that, uh, we've funded and we've removed from this budget, either because the project is completed, or the request did not come in any longer. The first one, I'll just mention a couple of them, the grant for the athletic, athletic field, $75,000, support for the restaurant association of 50,000, the performance benchmark study, which we're involved in right now, we budgeted 75,000, there's nothing in this budget to take that to step three, which is the performance audit. If, if the council decides to do that, we'll ask for an appropriation for that, and we really don't know what that would cost at this point. Helicopter training was a one-time item in the current year, same with mitig, the hazmat mitigation plan, um, because of the negotiations for the Newport Coast residential refuse collections, it was 100, the city saved 175,000 dollars, that's removed from this budget. Cardiac monitors, 72,000, and live scan fingerprints, 71,600. So those are just examples of items that were one-time expenditures, either in the current year or prior fiscal years, that have been removed from this budget.
Okay, can you explain the Newport Coast refuse thing? I don't think I quite understand what that means.
Yes, I, I believe, uh, Mark's here if I get stuck, but, uh, I believe when we rebid that contract, the, uh, the second time it was bid, it came in 175,000 dollars lower than the initial bid, and so, we didn't have to include that in as part of this budget, so it's a savings for the city.
Okay, so that this budget has taken into account that savings?
Correct.
It wasn't eliminated, it's just a savings.
New developments and pending issues that we have to deal with every time we put a budget together, of course uncertainties of future state actions, we all know what the state is facing, 10% across-the-board cuts, and we just got an update this week that said that, uh, there's a serious talk about taking away the remainder of the city's vehicle license fees, which, in this budget, the city's budget, $500,000, so that's a potential loss that may come out of this budget, depending on the state budget. Of course-
Yeah, we have got, through our recent development agreement, scheduled several million dollars in development fees to be received, are any of those included in the budget, or those are all additional?
Those are additional.
Okay, thank you.
I, I should mention, though, that a lot of those are factored into our facilities financing plan, they're not part of this budget. Which leads us to number two, timing of bond issue facility, city facilities, and you know, we're going to launch on an ambitious replacement program for city facilities, and so we need to factor that into this budget. Condition of city facilities, including the city hall and 20-year facilities financing plan, which I just mentioned, implementation of the fee study we've already talked about, natural gas dispenser and new refuse trucks, which we've been to the finance committee about, but we'll be coming back to the council very quickly, uh, to implement that program. And then, of course, any budget changes, whether it's presentation or how we do the budget, will, uh, based upon the performance benchmarking, marking program, which should be completed this fall, I think November. Now, just to talk briefly about the budget structure, the general fund is a key operating fund in the city's budget, that's what most people focus on, that's where we pay for all of our police and fire and library services, most of the, except for water and sewer, most of the city personnel are funded out of the general fund. We have several special revenue funds, these are just a few listed here, like state gas tax, major environmental liability, these are funds that are required to be set aside and special funds, can, cannot be spent on anything but what they're designed for. I mentioned two enterprise funds, our water and wastewater funds, and then we have several internal service funds, these are funds that are internal to the city, funds that service the organization, and that includes insurance reserve, retire medical, compensated abstances, and of course our equipment, maintenance, and replacement fund. Now to get into the meat of the budget, the general fund, um, is a section of the budget that is most often discussed, and generally of most interest to the residents, is used to account for resources, not required to be accounted for in another fund, like a special revenue fund. It represents the discretionary revenues and expenditures for the city, and this year, revenues are projected, in the general fund revenues are projected to be 153.4 million, which is 68% of total city revenues, and operating expenditures in the general fund- and operating expenditures in the general fund are estimated a hundred and forty-five point four million, which is seventy-six point two one percent of the city's total operating When we budget revenues, this is how we do it, we use all known factors, historical analysis is very important, we try to stay on top of state and county issues, we look at the economy, economic development within the community, growth expectations, and the last, most importantly, we rely upon the departments with the most expertise in those particular revenues, we ask them for their input. This is total revenue for 2008, 2009 fiscal year, all funds, two hundred and twenty-four million dollars. You can see, it's kind of hard to read on the slide, but sales and use tax makes up nineteen percent, property taxes, thirty-four percent, and you can look at the other revenues that are listed.
Dennis, what did you factor in as far as revenues from the new Pelican Resort?
That's going to be in one or two more slides, you'll see that.
Also, on that slide, does the two hundred and twenty-four million, does that include the portion of the capital improvement projects that are rebudgeted?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
Well, it's included. Any re-budget comes from current year revenue, and it's carried over, so it's included.
Are we including TOT tax under sales and other?
I'm sorry?
Is TOT lumped in with sales and other taxes?
We have a slide, a couple more to show you that percentage as well. Again, this is what we've tried to do on this slide, the top half of the slide is revenues, general fund revenues, and the bottom half of the slide is general fund expenditures. What we've tried to do is compare the last couple fiscal years, so you can see our growth And you can see that current year, we're estimating a hundred and fifty-three point seven million dollars in general fund revenues, which is about three point two two percent increase over the current year. This is our revised estimate, one forty-eight point five million. Conversely, on the expenditure side, current year, we're estimating a hundred and forty-one million dollars in expenditures, included in this budget is one hundred and forty-five million dollars in expenditures for a growth increase of about three point seven percent, three point zero seven percent. Keep in mind, though, that the money for the firefighter MOUs are not included in that, and when you add that money back to the budget, which is at this point just set aside, this number is about four percent.
Is the reduction in debt service cost a reflection of a change in interest rate assumptions, is that what's pushing that down?
No, I don't believe so. The debt service, our debt service interest rates are pretty much set by the terms of the bond issues. We do pay off the water bonds as part of this fiscal year, so the water...
Okay, that's what it is then.
Getting to Vice Mayor Degel's question, secure property tax, fifty-four million, thirty-five percent of the budget, the general fund budget, and then we're projecting an increase of four percent. Sales tax, twenty-three million, fifteen percent of the general fund budget, we projected an increase of two percent, and we think these numbers are pretty accurate, by the way, very much more conservative than in prior years. And then the transient occupancy tax, we're projecting an increase of twelve point one percent, primarily due to opening a Pelican Hill Resort in November, December this year.
Dennis, do you remember what that number was? It seems like it was maybe about two and a half million that we were saying the Pelican Hill Resort would bring in, and...
Yes, when it's fully operational.
Two and a half a year?
Looking at the expenditure side of the budget, this is how we typically budget. Of course...
Dennis, before we move to expenditures, and I was wondering, license and permit revenue were showing a decline of twenty-one percent, from three million nine to three million. Can you comment on that?
Yeah, I believe we looked at that, Councilman Abraham, because we thought the question might come up, and I think it's primarily due to park fees that aren't budgeted this year. We had significant park fees budgeted in the current year that aren't budgeted for next year because they're based upon development. So, that's the vast majority of that.
Okay, and so, did I understand correctly before that, for example, the Irvine Company Development Agreement fees would not have been included in this budget?
That's correct. I was seeing if I could find the number real quick, but I don't see it, so I'll get that for you, but it's park fees. Okay, looking at the expenditure side, of course, our most important thing we look at when developing our expenditure budget is looking at the council priorities. City management department budget recommendations were made in support of the twelve council policies, priorities. Under personnel, authorized positions are allocated divisions and funds based upon department recommendations. All required costs consist primarily of approved contracts, utilities, equipment, and is based on known or estimated costs. And uncontrollable costs, such as newer replacement equipment, and is based upon department justification and historical trends. This is expenditures, all funds, two hundred and fifty-six million. I think the question that this begs is, we saw revenues of all funds at two hundred and twenty-four million dollars, and why the gap? And that's primarily due to the ambitious facilities replacement program that we're launching on, and that includes such items as the Oasis Senior Center, it's in here budgeted at twenty million dollars in expenditures, at this point, there's no revenue shown. We know we're going to get donations, we know we're probably going to have to bond for some of that, but that revenue's not shown. Other items, three million dollars for city hall design fees, Sunset Ridge Park environmental review, eight hundred thousand, and end plans, eight hundred thousand. Police facility assessment, needs assessment, three hundred and thirty thousand, lifeguard headquarters needs assessment of a hundred and fifty thousand. So, those are all expenditures that are, that can't be recaptured if we do a COP issue or a bond issue for the facilities replacement. They're included on the expenditure side, they're not included on the revenue side at this point. I think this is an interesting slide, we'd like to show the CIP percentage of the total city budget over the last five years, and it varies. In two thousand two, three, we had fourteen percent, the next year thirteen percent, two thousand four, five, twenty-two percent, and it goes sixteen percent, twenty-one percent, nineteen percent, included as part of this budget, twenty-seven percent, but again, it includes those facilities replacements that I just mentioned.
So, to put that number in perspective, if we go back to the other numbers, there's basically a thirty-two million dollar, we'll call it a debt requirement identified in this budget. So, that means that of the sixty-eight million, roughly, what, forty-two million or forty-four million is PGO, and the balance is going to be, is assumed to be debt financed? Is that more or less accurate?
Yes, I believe the number's around thirty million, looking at debt financing. This chart just simply shows, the first column is total expenditures, that's citywide, and the last column is just general fund, comparing the two. So, if you look at total expenditure citywide, you'll see the two hundred and fifty-six million dollar figure that we just mentioned versus a hundred and fifty-six million, that being general fund. Of course, we have internal charges that we've talked about many times, that nets out to two hundred and thirty-nine million. But what's interesting is, if you look at the budget as a whole, right at fifty percent is spent on salaries and benefits, but if you look at the general fund, where the majority of the benefits are, salaries and benefits are paid from, it's nearly sixty-eight percent. And that's a truer picture of what our personnel costs are.
So, when you look at your CIP against the general fund, it's six, seven percent then?
That's correct, and that includes carryovers, by the way, which Steve will get into in Just speaking of, this is just a pie chart of the previous slide, a hundred and fifty-six million dollars in general fund expenditures, and sixty-seven percent of that devoted to salaries and benefits, seven percent CIP, one percent debt service, one percent capital outlay, and then twenty-four percent maintenance operations. Budgeted full-time positions, we have a slide coming up, as part of this budget, we're recommending a net increase of one full-time position going from eight twenty-seven to eight twenty-eight. City population in fiscal year ninety-two, ninety-three was sixty-seven thousand, estimated to be eighty-four thousand in two thousand eight, nine, an increase of almost twenty-four and a half percent over the same time period, full-time positions increased by eight and These are the position changes that are included in this budget. I mentioned that there's a net increase of one full-time position. There's been three positions deleted from the general services department, which Mark Harmon will mention in his presentation. We've added one assistant city attorney, added one library assistant for the Corona del Mar branch library, we've made some changes in part-time position, library clerk to full-time, and changed a part-time point seven five FTE lead park patrol officer to full-time for a net increase of one full-time position. A slide that I find very interesting, our contingency reserve is over nineteen million dollars. I remember that when that was done, seemed like in single digits. I'd like to point out, next to the last, the reserve for capital improvements, it's now funded at twenty-three point seven million, we increased that three and a half million dollars this year, and that's the seed money, if you will, for our facilities financing plan. And we've maintained the five million dollar reserve for PERS rate changes. The council can certainly redirect that money to whatever activity they desire, but we've left it this year, we don't know what PERS rates are going to do, but with the new rates, smoothing methods that they're using, we're not seeing the fluctuations in our PERS rates that we used to see, and so that reserve is not as important as it was, once was. Just a chart of our general fund, fund balance from the previous slide, we're... My pen quit working, but we're estimating a little over six, about sixty-one million dollars for the current fiscal year.
Now, I'd like to talk about city council priorities and how this budget reflects city council priorities. You know, you've heard about the operations, and you've heard about the capital outlays that are a part of the regular department's budgets, but when I looked at the budget, I looked at supplemental requests, and in particular, how those supplemental requests might impact the established council priorities. So, I'd like to go over each one of those now, and take a look at what we are budgeting for each of the twelve city council priorities. We do have in this budget, three million dollars for design and permitting, that includes the design competition money that would be going to the architectural firms, and in this current budget year, there's seventy-two thousand dollars. So, we think that we will get into certainly selecting an architect and starting on the plans and specs, but we certainly won't finish that with this budget year. The next one is the facility financing plan. We have city hall in for eight, three million dollars, Sunset Ridge Park, the environmental review included in that is eight hundred thousand. We have the Oasis Senior Center at twenty million, and also looking at the needs assessment for police facility and lifeguard headquarters. So, there is no money that goes directly to the financing plan, I mean, the financing plan really determines how these facilities are going to be financed, but we certainly think there's going to be a bond measure as far as the big ones, but we are ceding some of that money that can be paid back through the future bond measures.
Did you give any consideration to Marina Park as we're getting close on that one?
Steve, can you talk about that one?
Yes, I don't think we included really anything for Marina Park, because we're, I think the work we have ongoing will continue us and sustain us probably throughout most of the next year with the environmental process and the, you know, design process going concurrently. We don't really anticipate any major expenditures in final, you know, in construction until probably the following fiscal year, if any. The permitting process is going to take some time, we're really not aware of what those costs might be at this time.
We have the relocation of the homes and clearing the site.
Where are we going to budget the money for doing the environmental work? I imagine that EIR is going to be at least two or three hundred thousand dollars, I would guess.
Maybe Dave, Dave has the numbers for us.
I'm sorry, we already put on, we have the contracts already out with Michael Brandon Associate for the environmental, and also the design, Dan Herman is under contract right now, and we're expecting that to go through the year, and we're looking to do construction cost budgeting the following fiscal year.
Okay.
The next council priority, group homes and code enforcement. City attorney has in her budget an extra hundred thousand dollars for code enforcement services. There's a new assistant city attorney position that would mirror Aaron Harp's position. There is code enforcement assistance for group homes, this would be under Dave Kiff, and then we talked about taking that park patrol position from three quarters to one-quarter Water quality master plan, we have some pretty big items, butt gully canyon stabilization at two point three million, and Newport Coast runoff, ASBS protection, eel grass study, some in-exlude dredging, and the Upper Bay Resource Management Plan.
Homer, do we have any assumptions here built in about the continued availability of funds for the Upper Bay dredging, or are there any budget allocations at all in that regard?
No, there aren't.
So, we're still continuing to work with the Corps of Engineers for that?
That's right. The next one is the benchmarking effort, and as Dennis already said, we have a hundred and sixty-five thousand in this current year budget, that will carry us over for the work that will conclude by about the end of the year, but we don't have anything else budgeted. If we come back for the third phase, then we will get a good indication of what our focus is going to be and how much that will cost, and we will come back to the city council for that budget authorization. Vanning ranches, we just kind of pulled a figure out of the air, thinking that appraisal would be a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so that's a placeholder, maybe more, maybe less, but we certainly wanted to put something in there for that appraisal. Improving traffic flows, the last one is Irvine realignment at about one point eight million dollars, so this is really the only road project we put in improving traffic flows. When Steve goes through his CIP, you're going to get a breakdown on how much is going to be for traffic signalization, and how much is going to be for street projects, and how much for drainage projects, but we're looking at the traffic signal modernization here at a little over eight hundred and fifty thousand. We must budget something for neighborhood traffic issues, a hundred and fifty thousand. Traffic signal replacement is an ongoing thing, it's upgrading the technology, and really the guts of some signals that need it. So, we are budgeting more than two million dollars in improving traffic flows, and that's without the Irvine realignment project. As far as the airport policy is concerned, we do have Tom Edwards and Richard Cox, both consultants, working on airport issues. We have the Go Local study that we got a hundred thousand dollars from OCTA, and I just budgeted some money for corridor city expenses, we host them as far as regular lunches are concerned, and anything that comes up that might, we might need a budget account for. Align policies and codes with the general plan, ongoing process and has been for the last three years, LCP certification is still in there, we have some economic development studies, website, five thousand... Website, five thousand dollars for economic development information. And again, I want to point out, because I don't want to hide this, and not approved was the two-hundred-thousand-dollar supplemental request for economic development studies.
What, specifically what studies were those?
I'm going to call Sharon up in order to address that. Councilman Hen. I think she's speaking to me by now after not funding that one. Hopefully she will.
I was only whining about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, and so this is fifty thousand dollars of that. The Economic Development Strategic Plan had shown the preparation of a master plan for West Newport Mesa, and I think that there was additional money to be implementing some recommendations from the parking study. Unfortunately, I didn't bring my notes on that with me today because I was preparing for the next study session, so I'll be prepared to talk about that in more detail then.
Another council priority.
Another council priority is parks and recreation facilities, especially active parks and recreation facilities, so we have quite a bit allocated to that. Sunset Ridge Park, Oasis, we've already talked about. Back Bay View Park enhancements, two-hundred thousand dollars carried over. CYC is Grant Howe Park improvements, and we're going to do improvements in that facility so that we can relocate some of the Oasis activities over to this site whenever the Oasis project is under construction. We have an add-on to Little Corona restroom. We have the old carryover of the Equestrian facilities through the County Redevelopment Agency. It's a relatively small project. We do have the Mariners Park improvements. That is the restroom, Steve, I think. And we have some lighting replacement also in some of our parks.
Homer or Steve, what's the story on the Buffalo Hills Park lighting? I thought that went in a month or so ago.
You know, I don't have an exact update on that project unless Dave does. Do you?
Actually, I believe it's under construction right now. We're actually putting in some of the lighting out there for both Buffalo Hills and the other park, I believe.
And I think we showed it in the budget as being carried into the next year because we weren't sure if it was going to go or not, but apparently it is going.
I think the City Manager's Newsletter alluded to the fact that it was underway probably now.
Currently under construction.
I'd like to mention, too, that the reason we're including fiscal year '08 is because the council priorities were set for the calendar year, and yet we're looking at a budget for the fiscal year. So a lot of these items are ongoing currently and will continue into the new year.
And another part of that is, we knew that we had a substantial amount of unbudgeted revenues this year, and we didn't think that it would be wise to count on having that same situation next year, so we tried to pre-fund as many things as we could this year, maybe as far as council priorities that if I just was using next year's money, would not be able to fund. So we tried to get under contract before the end of this budget year in order to accomplish a number of those things.
Before you move on, on that Oasis Senior Center construction, the twenty million dollars, so we're budgeting that, I mean, what's the offsetting revenue for that? A bond? Or CEO?
We don't really have any offsetting revenue identified at this point. So we've identified the expenditure, but not the revenue.
Yeah, there are no revenues included in the budget, but of course, we're anticipating revenues from a bond, the Irvine Company Development Fee-Matching Grant, fundraising activities by the Oasis Committee.
All right, well.
But none of that, none of that revenue is included in the budget.
But the expense is?
Kind of to be determined, because we know, we know we're going to have the expense. We just don't know where the revenue is coming from to allocate it to us.
So how do you show it as the offsetting revenue to balance your budget?
It doesn't balance.
Right, that's-
That was the twenty million dollar differential, basically.
Oh, there was, okay. Then I must have missed it earlier.
But, but so everybody's clear, though, the plan of finance for Oasis involves a ten million dollar city contribution and roughly a ten million dollar contribution from the sources that Councilmember Hen just enumerated.
We didn't want to make any assumptions on that. Next council priority is improved public communications. Of course, we're funding eight newsletters at a higher expense than we did this past year because the postage just went up as of yesterday. We also have some productions and maintenance money. Our website, this was one of the things that we intend to commit to before the end of this fiscal year. Hundred-and-fifteen thousand dollars is in there for a complete redo of the website, so we are looking at a couple of vendors now, and we will decide who that vendor is going to be before June thirtieth. And advertising consultant services of eighteen thousand for various things. Update fees to ensure cost recovery. We don't have anything that is going to be costing us that we know of out of this study, and there is the potential for up to, we estimate, about five and a half million dollars in new revenues, depending upon how the council decides those issues. I think this next slide then is going to give a better indication of resources allocated towards council priorities over this current fiscal year and next fiscal year. Of course, the twenty million dollars for Oasis is the big one out of that, but we're looking at over those two years of totals of in excess of thirty-one and a half million dollars. And of course, in the outlying years, as some of the park projects get very close and get under construction, you know, we are going to have big numbers then each year as far as CIPs are concerned. But I really wanted to show to the city council how money would be allocated towards your priorities, and I did try and use the supplemental money. I mean, it wasn't my, I didn't feel like it was really my decision to decide whether Robin needs a, another Deputy City Attorney or not, but based upon what I heard from the city council as far as code enforcement and as far as some of the legal issues was concerned, I thought I would include that as my recommendation and just make sure that you understood where I was coming from on that and that it would help further some of those council priorities. So I really tried to use that as my roadmap in terms of how that one-point-seven million dollars in supplemental was used, because all of those things that have been detailed in these priorities would be supplemental items. They would not normally be built into the operating budget of the departments.
That's really the budget overview that we've prepared for you today. I know we went through it very quickly. We had forty-five slides more than in the past, and I went over the beginning slides very quickly, so we're here to answer any questions. I would like to point out to the public that this slide presentation is on our website at the, at the address city.nuport-beach.ca.us under accounting slash budget, and so anybody can review it there.
Dennis, could you also email me a copy of that?
Sure, I'd be glad to.
Yeah, that was a very good presentation, Dennis. Very comprehensive. Does anyone have any questions, Dennis or Homer, before we go on to the capital improvements? I've just got two. I meant to ask it on the park slide and the priorities. What is the eight-hundred thousand dollars for Sunset Ridge going to?
That's going to EIR and the conceptual development, design development.
And that's kind of what I thought. And then another question, it's something that you didn't touch on, and maybe you just have a general idea on it, but how much money are we currently owed by our understandings from the county on the Santa Ana Heights Redevelopment Agency?
I don't think we're owed any money. I, I think the county has paid us for the park site and has paid us certainly all of the money for the fire station, so the county's-
What about, I guess the things that come to my mind are the design and the money we're spending on that Equestrian facility. I have heard that we have spent a substantial amount of city funds on the undergrounding district out there.
Well, I was just going to ask Steve on the undergrounding district. I don't know if we are, have billed the county for any of our administration of that yet, so I'm not very familiar as far as where we are in the status of that.
I'm not sure if we've-
I don't believe we have. The small conversations I've been in, we've actually had some discussions about getting it off. We haven't started the spending, though we have about seven-point-three million, I believe, in this year's budget for that.
Have the plans cleared? I mean, are they finished?
I don't believe they are at this point. I'd have to check further with staff then.
So our work is really going to come in and administering that project whenever the contractors move forward and we oversee the project, so I don't think we're-
So any expenses we incur will be made whole when the bond sale occurs, then I presume?
Yes, and any time that we've spent before this point, while we haven't billed, we are keeping track of that so that we can include that.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, yes.
One other question, Dennis. I recall last year you spoke on the secured property tax revenues. I think you gave us some background on what the County of Orange was saying regarding all of that. Do you have any background behind the four percent increased revenue assumption that drives out of information we're getting? I noticed that the estimate for this year came in at seventy-four million, and I was curious how firm that number is. Is there still any upside left in that number, or is that pretty well-known? And then what guidance were they giving you for the next year?
Two answers to your question, Councilman Hen. I'll take the second one first, that there is no upside to our revenue estimates. I think we're right on. We've received six out of our eight secured property taxes, and it's tracking very, very close. We did revise the estimate as part of this budget, but I don't see any upside to our property taxes. The second question, what guidance have we received from the county? That's really, really none, other than what I read in the newspaper about assessments. And that's not the fault of county. They normally don't come out with their assessment rolls until August, so it's kind of a, you know, a guess of what we can, what we should budget for the new fiscal year. I was very concerned about the current year not making our estimate. I think we will. I use four percent, maybe conservative. I know that there are cities in LA County that are actually budgeting for a decline. So we know we get two percent normally with Prop 13 and then whatever new development we have and any remodels, so I don't know if that answers your question. We have, over the last twenty-five years, averaged about an eight percent increase per year, average. There's been years, much more than that. There's actually been a couple of years that declined.
Any more questions? We will turn it over to Dave Webb for the CIP discussion.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. Appreciate coming tonight and discussing the CIP with you, and some of the information you've already seen, so we'll go through that, and I'll try to skim over some of the redundant and stop me if there's any questions. Basically, what we have is our CIP tonight, basically is, serves as a funding development tool for you. It sets priorities and appropriates funds. It identifies projects for planning purposes and identifies potential conflicts as we go through it. And basically, it's a changing document. Thank you very much for the lights. It involves responding to changes and other priorities as they change. The next slide I have for you is basically a little summary, and you saw a little past history of our funding programs. This is our CIP history from two thousand and one. You can see it's kind of generally been climbing steadily, and if you, this year you see a large spike. That's the black line there in the basic funding. That's mainly due to Oasis. We have twenty million dollars in there, and we also have three million dollars for the City Hall. The CIP addresses council priorities, and we've seen some slides on that. We have one of the priorities, the new City Hall. That is surely in here, the design of that. Facility financing, we heard about Sunset Ridge. We've got the police and lifeguard facility assessment plans. We have Marina Park. We talked a little bit about their City Hall and some other priorities in there. Water quality, there's a whole list of projects in here we'll go over a little later. We have Buck Gully, and we have the eel grass. We have irrigation controls and runoff reduction, and also improving traffic flow with our modernization plan is in here. Phase one, two, and three are underway right now. We also have jamboree widening and a couple others that are in there. And parks and recreation, a lot of big parks, projects underway. Again, Sunset Ridge, I mentioned Marina Park, CYC, and Oasis, all falling in that area. So what we have is, this year's CIP consists of sixty-eight million dollars in capital projects. There's ninety-two projects included in there. Forty-seven million dollars of that is new funding, and twenty-one million dollars is Public's role in this, basically, we're identifying the needs of the projects through master plans, assignments, requests, and other input. We develop the concepts and designs, then we prepare the RFPs for the design and construction of these projects. Selecting consultants and contractors falls into that role, and then managing the construction inspection to the, into the project. And also, primary function is controlling the costs and the schedule of project. Those are duties we perform to implement the CIP. And the CIP this year is broken into several major categories, and I'm hoping you all have this book right here. I'm going to speak to that if you'd like. The categories are basically facilities, street and drainage, traffic, parks, water quality, water and wastewater miscellaneous. Under our facilities area, and if you have your budget, you can turn to that. I'm going to speak to all the projects are listed there, but I'll go through the highlights on that. We have twenty-six million dollars worth of projects this year under facilities. City Hall's included. I mentioned the CYC and the, a couple fire station modifications. We have some gender improvements to Station Five and some tower modifications to the fire tower. The lifeguard headquarters is included in there for the needs assessment, also the police facility needs assessment, and then Oasis, we've talked about for the twenty-million-dollar rebuild. Little Corona restrooms, we're slating to modify this year, and Santa Ana Heights Equestrian Center are all part of the facilities improvements. There are several other items in facilities. If you have any questions on those, I could take that now, or we could continue on and go through some of the other categories. I'll move on to, just, just a picture. We are doing a lot, you know, the Newport Theater Arts Center is basically done right now. It should be completed this June, but it's been a great little project, and we're moving along under our facilities program. Under streets and drainage, we have sixty million dollars worth of projects coming up. We broke that down in the subtitles there. There's, the street work, we have fifteen million dollars, and one-point-one million dollars of that is drainage-related. Some of the big projects in there are the arterial projects. Irvine Avenue, we spoke a little bit about. That currently is just about ready to start. The county is doing that project for us. We will be reimbursing them for our portion, the funding on that. Jamboree widening is one of our grant projects. We actually have two jamborees. We're working on widening the bridge over the seventy-three. This project here noted is the widening at MacArthur. We have some intersection improvements. And then Pelican Hills is another large project. We're working and hoping to award this August on that.
Dave, a couple of questions for you. The Jamboree Road widening, multi-year project?
Several of those are multi-year. I understand the widening of the bridge has been going on for some time. I inherited that, and we're working with Caltrans. We're currently going through some negotiations trying to fund that. We've got the design fund. We have some OCTA grant funds, but the majority of that fund was supposed to come from the toll road agency, and we haven't got them to commit right now to their portion, about four-point-five million, if I recall.
Okay, they've kind of come into hard times, so what's the backup plan?
Well, we actually, we had met recently with the OCTA, and they proposed to talk to us more about that. They encouraged us to continue on with the project. Hopefully, we can work out some kind of funding mechanism. We proposed all kinds of things to OCTA to kind of chew on. Maybe, maybe they would front the money, and the toll road agency could pay us back at the end of the twenty years. Maybe we could put a little swap or squeeze on the toll road agency to change from the original plan of building the J-one and the J-five off-ramps and maybe do a better project that we're assuming the traffic numbers say that we could do the bridge widening and get the same result for less money, and they'd fund that. So ongoing discussions, basically.
And then notwithstanding city facilities, what's the breakdown between, in your program for state funding and then local funds, roughly?
I don't have those numbers right offhand, but under funding, if I could.
Are you speaking to essentially the road funding?
In general, your CIP, you know, like I noticed, you know, some of these projects are going to be funded by Prop 50. You know, generally, what's, what's this, how much is the state supporting of our projects in our CIP program?
Well, one, one bit of bad news is we didn't make the cut on the Prop 50, but the good news is there's a, there's a chance on another funding program that we're going to pursue, and we're still hopeful we're going to get that. Some of these things are kind of still up in the air as, we just got preliminary information that OCTA is, intends, we kind of made the first, the draft cut or the recommended cut for the traffic signalization, modernization project, so it looks like we're going to get those funds. Some of these things don't announce till June, so we're not sure. Some of these things are still pending as far as grant funds go, but we can always depend on our gas tax and our measurement turnback, which is a substantial number, and I'm just looking for that now, what that is.
Actually, if, on the funding summary in your budget, I could give you little highlights there. Roughly about ten million dollars is coming from the general fund. We have another two million, two-point-two million out of gas tax, about a one-point-three million dollars out of Prop 1B this year, and traffic congestion relief. We have another- traffic congestion relief, we have another $750,000. We have some tide and submerged land money that we're using, about $3 million. Grants and contributions is about 4.6. That would be grants from Measure M.2. Transportation circulation, we have 1.4 million, some money out of business excise tax, about $200,000. Measure M. is another large one, $3.9 million. We have some oil money. Another large one is that the facilities, we've talked about the bonding. We're counting on about $24 million in that area. And then COSA has about $1.7 million, contributing up to the $68 million.
When Dave says $10 million from the general fund, probably half of that is carryover, at least. So it isn't all coming from this, this year's revenues?
Also, under our street program, we have several local residential streets. We'll be looking at Bayside Drive, pavement rehabilitation, Dove Street, Coron del Mar, basically south of the freeway, all the numbered Flower Streets. We'll be looking at overlays in that area. King's Road, right up here above Mariners Mile, we'll be looking at pavement rehabilitation there. Lido Island, looking to do Via Lido from Newport Inn over to the island, and then about half the island this year, and then the rest of the island. We'll try to catch next year due to lack of funds in that. Testan Ave, Avon is another area that we'll be doing some street improvements in. Just recent projects you've noticed around town, up at Cambray Drive, we have residential programs. This was Marine Avenue Bridge last year as we paved that.
Dave, just back to the photo. Are we pretty well done up in Spyglass, or is there more to do up there?
You know, I couldn't answer. I think we're closed, but I could, I could get you a firm date if you wanted then.
Thank you.
Other projects out of our street and drainage program, we have alley improvements, concrete alleys. Baboa Village is set, and we also do an annual concrete program. We do a lot of concrete, curb gutter, and sidewalk work around the city. We'll be continuing that. In the other programs, we have a pavement management plan update. That's our management plan that guides all our pavement decisions. We've done the last update in 1997. We'll be looking to a major review of that to make sure we're calibrated and moving along. Steve and I talked this year, and we want to start adding a concrete pavement program. It's something we haven't really funded in the last years, and we're starting to get more and more of that. So we want to, after the pavements evaluated, start looking to try to fund some of the concrete pavements we have. We have a bridge seismic retrofit construction program, the Goldenrod Bridge, a couple bridges over the bay on Jamboree will be looked at. And then various median improvements are included under this area. Under traffic, and moving along to that area, we have several projects included. We've talked extensively about our modernization. Phase one is currently under construction. Phase two and three are being designed right now. We'll look to design those, award those, and construct them next fiscal year. That's in the Jamboree and also the airport area. We have our annual signal program that we do maintenance in that area.
Dave?
I'm sorry.
When do you expect to start spending money for phases after two and three for traffic signal modernization?
When we originally scoped that, we thought we'd have them several years out, but after the last council direction on that, we've actually tried to expedite. And this year we planned on, the note on phase three, there was budgeted for 9, 10, and we actually put in OCTA grant funds for that. And after council discussion, we're going to move those monies forward if we can, construct both phases this year. And then we'll try to probably design four, five, and six, my guess, at the beginning of next year, and put those out as a package, try to expedite it.
Beginning of next year, you mean '09 calendar year beginning, or?
Yeah, the design is not included in this year's budget. We're finishing off phase one, two, and three this year. Design for four, five, and six was anticipated to start next fiscal year.
In the '09 fiscal year?
Yes, '09, '09.
Okay.
Any thoughts on moving them forward faster?
We would, we could do that. We could try to move forward funds and program design funds on that. My only initial concern is I know we have a lot of programmed work in that, including Jamboree and others, and we'd have to look at staffing maybe to do that. I just, I guess my gut feeling is if we could get maybe through phase one and see how that's working out. If it looks like it's going smoothly, and it's not a lot of work, we could try to program something forward. But we're open to council's discretion. If you'd like us to relook at that, we could do that.
What's involved with the design phase? That's primarily a consultant?
Generally, it's a consultant. We're using I-TERRIS right now. There is, some staff work back and forth as you go through these things, and there's plan check, and there's a lot of field checks and things like that. I do know, we don't have a huge staff there, and a lot of them are committed to just getting the, the new software and programs and everything up on phase one, which will be going through this year. That'll probably take most of the, the time right there. The other side of the time, we'll be going to keeping I-TERRIS going on phase two and three, and then trying to get Jamboree and a couple other major projects going. So, but we could, again, we could look at that.
And phases four are the west side of the bay, four or five sides?
You know, I don't, I, I'm sorry.
Well, I think we determine those phases or whatever you want them to be. And we were talking about maybe just trying to do one large project at that point, try to get as much of it as we can. I know Councilman Hen had some interest in the peninsula, and I know there, there may be some other areas in town you want us to look at. But I think we should probably bring that back to you when we get closer to it and really, really get a firm handle on, on which comes next.
We could report back to us designs going through two and three and see if we can squeeze that in, or however you'd like to approach that.
Well, I presume, though, that if you're going to start advancing other phases, and something else that's in here is going to suffer, correct? I mean, I mean, you only got so much capacity to do work, so if you're going to advance something that you don't have in this budget, then something in here is going to have to suffer. So if we're going to do that, I think we should, you know, just don't come back and say you can do it, but tell us what's going to suffer if you do it.
Well, and where the money is going to come from, because two and three are going to be at least partially funded by OCTA, and pushing anything else out any further than that from OCTA is probably problematic. But that doesn't mean that we can't go ahead and do the, do the plans and specs and front-load that.
Yeah, I was just going to say, in rough order of magnitude, how much money do we need to spend to do designing phase here on the, what's, four, five, and six?
Yeah, I'm going to say probably a couple hundred thousand. I don't have the document in front of me, but following through on those phases, yeah, there's probably several hundred thousand dollars worth of design to package it all up. Again, don't take my number until I look at the I-TERRIS report, but I'm gut feeling around there. It's probably more of a staffing issue. Can we process all that work? We've got a large chunk right now, and I'd have to see what we could put off or maybe defer, or is there another way to do it? Can we get additional consultants to come in? But that, that's kind of problematic, too, sometimes. It really takes the institutional knowledge from some of these, so.
Yeah, the situation of the consultants managing the consultants, I guess. But that's certainly doable, and, and we could certainly take another look at that. But as the mayor mentioned, there, there might be downside, and that might be other projects, like, you know, our neighborhood traffic calming, traffic management programs, or, or other programs we're trying to move forward, the wayfinding signs and those kinds of things. We could look at those priorities again and say, and bring back to you what we think we might have to juggle around in order to push those forward. But we don't have unlimited, you know, in-house staff to, to manage a lot of this all at once. We really just, and my concern is that first phase, getting, as Dave mentioned, getting that first phase under our belt. See how it's working, see how, how, how good we can roll it out, and how quickly we can roll it out, and then maybe bring it back to you and relook at that, at that time.
Well, I appreciate you have limited resources. I'd like to understand what the alternative looks like, though. Your best guess for what an alternative would look like and what the impact would be.
And we need to come back to you and make sure that everyone is, when we're talking about phases four, five, and six, everyone knows what we're talking about. You know, how much the design is going to cost is dependent on how large those, those portions are. So we need to take another look at that and have that discussion with you.
Also, under traffic this year, we have some other improvements. We're doing some pedestrian improvements on River Avenue. We have the wayfinding sign program continuing. We have additional money in that, and the West Coast Highway Vision Plan was included in this year's budget.
What is the estimated completion time for directional way signs?
As I've seen it, it's an ongoing project. We had most of last year and this year, in talking to staff, it looks like we'll be doing additional yearly programs, trying to figure out where these are going to go. I don't have a whole lot of information on that. I've just kind of touched that one. But I could get a schedule for it if you'd like on that. Under parks, harbors, and beaches, we have $3 million programmed in this area. And we have, again, we mentioned Sunset Ridge Park is under design there, coming up. Grant and Howl Tennis Courts is a project we were going to do last year, but we ended up doing Newport, West Newport Tennis Courts. And this year, we'll be doing Grant and Howl Tennis Courts. Also, some sand replenishment on our, our county program, where we contribute to that along the main beaches, and also Baboa Island is set for some sand through the harbor department. And then we've got our Ocean Pier Project this year. We do this every other year, doing maintenance, and there's some miscellaneous dock improvements included in this area. Just mentioned this project here. We just completed this project, West Coast Tennis Courts. Under water quality, we talked a little bit about this. We have several projects in here. Buck Gully is the large one in there, the stabilization and flood control. There is an eel grass study that's in the books there. Also runoff reduction, we continue to do that, Newport Coast and citywide, and also putting in smart controllers and central controllers to help reduce our runoff and use less water. And then we have some AAS/BS protection programs in there. Steve did mention on the Buck Gully, we did apply for Prop 50 funds. A lot of that was included in our project, and we just recently heard we would probably not get those funds. However, our staff is now working in another direction. Prop 84 is out there, and we're going to try to reapply for that and hopefully be successful in that area to get grant funds for those projects.
What are you assuming your revenue sources for the Seminix Slough dredging project? That's your $50,000?
That's actually one of the questions. That's been for several years, it's been reprogrammed in here. It's called out as a general fund, and I believe it's money being held in case we can get a core of engineer project going and also combine it with the back bay dredging, as I understand it. So, and I don't know exactly if that's ready to go yet. I hear we're still working through the core process, and it'll probably be some time. So this is just a holding place.
Isn't there some money coming out of the Hoag Development Agreement that's going into that?
I don't.
Is that on top of this, or?
No, actually, the, well, the Hoag Agreement actually never slotted that money there. It was, the old agreement had $200,000 towards it, and then we kind of think in our negotiations, we said, well, we'd like to.
We're confusing with the old one.
Yeah, it specifically allocated money towards that. The new agreement was for projects at the city's discretion. And I think in our discussions with Hoag, certainly, we talked about putting it there. I think that I've actually heard some more promising things with regard to the core, that they may be actually coming to us sooner rather than later, hopefully to, to do a joint project to dredge their half of the slough and ours as well. So, you know, I don't know that it's imminent, but certainly there may be some developments on that in the near future.
Yeah, we're still working in that direction with them.
Have we allocated any of the revenues from the cost in the lawsuit that was supposed to go against the water quality? So those would be on top of this, or?
That's right. We, we haven't.
We have some water facilities we'll be doing this year under our CIP. We have $3 million slated in that. And basically, last year, we outfitted our two deep wells that we have. Now we're going to be going back and doing our two shallow wells up at the Dolphin location and the other location. I can't recall the street. We have some cast iron main replacement that was in our water master plan. We were going to pull that forward due to the assessment district on Baboa Island. If that goes, we want to make sure we get those water mains done beforehand and before the alley works done. Same thing on the ocean front alley projects.
The city of Long Beach is apparently experiencing a crime wave of stolen manhole covers. Apparently, 50 of them have been stolen, along with, you know, copper pipe and electric construction sites. Are we seeing any of that in Newport Beach at all?
Probably more. Mark Harmon could help us. I haven't heard of too much. I hear the isolated case where a sign's missing or some copper wire is railing to a, a bridge, but...
I think there was just a report that the police arrested somebody stripping a house under construction of the copper tubing. So apparently, they're here, too.
But not the manhole covers. We haven't had that problem.
Again, this was a recent well. This is our Dolphin Water Well. We just did work there last year. We're going to do the second well here this year. In our wastewater program, we are going to continue with our wastewater management plan update, along with cable, closed-circuit television of our underground system in compliance with the WDR requirements from the regional board. We have five lift stations. We're going to try to refurbish this year out of our 17, I believe. And then we've got some minor sewer main and lateral improvements, mainly connected with the assessment districts. Again, when we're in the alleys, we want to make sure we take care of those things. And then we have a category of miscellaneous projects, and included in that, we have some slope repairs. Down in Chinaco, we have some sloughing and slope issues. Also, we have some fuel upgrades to our fueling system that are required, AQMD, I believe. And the Santa Ana Heights Utility District is in there. And one other large one is the Oil Field Improvement Program, trying to increase the oil yield there. The budget categories are broken down as such. We included these slides. That was the reason for the new handout. If you can see here, we've got the facilities, which a large portion of it, and the streets and drainage over here, and we go into traffic and et cetera, all the way down to miscellaneous. The next slide actually breaks that down further, if you like, to kind of see how that's broken down. Starting with facilities, here's the Oasis going to City Hall and the other facilities. So that's kind of the facilities chunk. We have our street area here. Street sidewalks is a large portion of that. Bridge improvements and tide structures and drainage structures down here. Traffic, again, we've got a little, the modification is the big one, and then there's some miscellaneous traffic improvements and neighborhood traffic. Parks, we have those included. Again, harbor, and we break it down with water quality, water, wastewater, and then our undergrounding. We also broke it down and kind of show you the categories by projects and rebudgets, and the new budgets requested on this. A total of 92 projects, again, $68 million is we'll be looking at on our CIP. And then project delivery. We, we work off a master schedule that we've developed to help us with that. That schedule tries to take into account the many factors that affect our schedules here. Community events, seasons, schools, beach and tourist, weather, rain events. We have a lot of regulatory, environmental issues that overlap. We have phasing and peak hour, just as you saw in Mariners Mile. We're only working on the off-hours to commute. Grant restrictions. There's a host of things that go into that, and we try to accommodate that in the schedule. But it does tend to change once in a while because of some of these conflicts. We also, to help our project delivery, and we talked a little bit about that, supplementing our staff with consultant services to try to help that and increase the load and get projects out. And with that, we would conclude our presentation. Open up any questions you have.
Okay. Any questions of, of, please draw one?
I guess I have one question is that, and I don't know how it plays into this thing, but it seems like we're at kind of a unique point in our city's history, that we've got right now at least three development agreements that are approved, or one close to being finally approved, that, I'm just trying to add up the money in my head, but I think it comes up close to $50 million worth of money towards capital improvement projects that are going to be coming in over the next five to seven years, most likely, some of them being more certain than others. Certainly, Lenar Project is the most problematic, and Newport Center and the Hoag thing, more, more certain. Just seems somehow we ought to be plugging that into what we're looking at, you know, some, in, in some manner. I'm not sure how, but as we were going through all this stuff, I'd kept, I was kept trying to think, well, how are, how are those funds going to plug into what we're talking about?
We could certainly come back with some recommendations. The facilities master plan and taking a look at that and how things are going to be funded, I think comes into play. And also, if we want to even put some more money in our facility reserve fund, Dennis said that we're maybe $2 to $3 million short this year from what we had anticipated, hoping would be our plan. Maybe we would want to front-load that, that fund also. So I, I think there are a lot of options. Dennis, do you have some comments?
Just, it's, it's a very valid point. What we need to do is marry our facilities financing plan with our budgeting process. We just didn't have enough information at this point of when we're going to start these projects. But the development agreements that you mentioned, many of them that you mentioned, especially the ones that are more for sure than the others, are included as part of the facilities financing plan. And they're itemized on there as a revenue source, the, you know, the Newport Center and the Hoag Development Agreement, et cetera. Others that, that mentioned Lenar that we're not sure about and we didn't include. But those, those development agreements, for the most part, are as part of the facilities financing plan, but they are not part of this budget document.
Okay.
You know, I might make a suggestion that it could be helpful, and that's to prepare some sort of a reconciliation that shows the likely, you know, this $30 million shortfall between spending and revenue here. It might be helpful, Dennis, to prepare some sort of a reconciliation that shows how that gap would, would be expected to be closed. I don't, I don't think it's all expected to be closed by borrowing. And so if you could give us a summary like that, maybe for the next study session, that would be helpful.
Yeah, I, that wouldn't be difficult at all.
Aren't, aren't we required by law to adopt a balanced budget? Or not? Or not? I mean, it just seems, it seems, you know, how do you adopt a budget that is 30 million out of whack?
I don't think you're required to adopt a balanced budget. You know, we're, no, not at all. We're, you can't spend money that you don't have, of course. We're not the federal government, but, but I don't know of any requirement to adopt a balanced budget. A lot, a lot of projects over the years, you know, we include projects in the contribution fund, for instance, and if we get the money, we do the project. If we don't get the money, we don't do the project. So we show the expenditure side, not necessarily the revenue side.
One thing I've always wondered, I know that when I was in, in planner's school, as they call it, that part of what they taught in planning was doing capital improvements budgeting. And one of the things I seem to remember was, one of the recommendations was that municipalities go out and do like five or seven year capital improvement programs where you're very specific and pretty right on the money for the current years. And then the further you go out, obviously, you're getting more problematic with your assumptions, but at least you have a better handle on what the big picture is as far as where you're going. And I was always curious why we don't do that in Newport Beach. Is that not considered the state of the art anymore or, it's a long time since I was in planning school, so.
I think we do part of that. You know, we have water and wastewater master plans that we adhere to. So I think we can tell you at five years or seven years, you know, what we would anticipate, we would be replacing and what that cost estimate would be. I don't think we do that necessarily. Well, we have a streets five-year plan also.
We do a lot of things internally that I guess, you know, we just, it's kind of an in-house barometer for us. But I guess in the past, at some point in the past, they'd gotten away from approving, you know, showing the multi-years because there was a, I guess maybe a level of expectations that may or may not be met depending on funding issues that may come in the future. We can certainly show projects farther out, but you know, as long as everyone understands that the revenue picture changes, Dennis is going to tell me to chop stuff out and that kind of thing. We could certainly do that though, and, and we'd enjoy doing that.
And I think we're in a, kind of a new phase that we haven't been in before, and that is that we do have some rather large projects on the horizon. We have a couple of park projects. We have the City Hall project and those are going to be moving forward and over the next couple of years, we're going to have some big numbers. So I, I think it's natural that that's where our focus is going to be. The wastewater and water and, and streets kind of is self-perpetuating because there are built-in assessments on what needs to be done on those. As a city, we just haven't taken on the kind of projects that we're looking at that are in the pipeline right now. And I think we're wrestling with, you know, how to deal with them and how to plan them and push them along quickly.
Okay. Jim Tagle?
I think the mayor's idea, it may seem like an old idea, but it's certainly come full circle. I know San Jose, which we've been looking at with our benchmarking initiative, you know, considered really on the forefront, they're looking at five-year plans and in terms of both their financial planning and their resources.
Councilman Curry?
Yeah, I would just say that the facilities financial, financing plan is really designed to be a 15-year plan to give us a good view of when we're going to sequence these projects. And I understand that that's sort of been bollocked up because of the uncertainty on City Hall, but now that that issue's been resolved and we're moving forward, I think that can be a much more utilitarian tool in terms of planning for these facilities. For example, we have money going to upgrade the police facility, the headquarters facility. And we spent a lot of money there last year for a building we're going to do a needs assessment for may very well tear down in the near future. The issue is how near in the future is that going to be? And that's why we need to have that plan in place and we need to be looking at, as the mayor suggests, a few years on these capital projects.
Okay, any other comments? We're early here. Good job.
Thank you very much.
Okay, any comments from the public on the budget presentation? Seeing nobody clamoring to speak to that.
Mr. Mayor, if I just may make one comment, and that alludes to what will happen in two weeks when we start our budget preparations with the departments. If we want to be crisp, we don't want to bore you with a lot of detail. I've told all the departments, no more than 10 minutes and some people will take less than that and just really hit the highlights. So we're not trying to gloss over anything, but we don't want to bore you with the detail and prove, you know, how, how worthy we are as far as providing city services. We're going to try and be, you know, to the point and move it along.
Okay.